The last few weeks, we've been talking, we've been continuing the subject of the nature of God. We've progressed from trying to, I think the first, in the first session, we tried to look at, or we tried to tackle the subject of Trinity head on. But then we changed that a little bit and went down the path of revealing, or rather focusing on the various revelations of God in the Bible, so that the Bible itself would speak for itself. So you know, I, for example, struggled with the concept of Trinity for many years because I was trying to understand this the way people understood it. You see, the doctrine of Trinity has been around for a long time, and it has been articulated in a particular way. And I think we all get caught up in the technicalities of how someone has understood it and therefore explained it. Instead of simply going to the Bible and letting the Bible speak for itself, I decided to do that, and I think I've been really blessed by it, and I hope you have also. Because the Bible provides all the evidence that we need. When you open the Bible and you see that it's clear, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, you know? We may have had questions about the identity of the angel of the Lord, and there were, you know, there would have been lots of debate back and forth. But the Bible states, for me, the passage that did it was the passage where Jacob was talking to his wives, and he said that he saw in a vision the angel of the Lord telling him that he was the God of Bethel. That for me settled it. If the angel, no angel has the right to call himself God. Angels will not even accept worship, and this angel told Jacob that he was the God of Bethel. That settled it for me. And so we have seen unequivocal, unequivocal evidence in the Old Testament that God manifested himself in different ways, and that even at some point he was called the angel of the Lord. Then when we get, then we moved on to the New Testament. And in the New Testament, we've seen clearly that Jesus was not just a man, or a prophet, or the Messiah, but he was actually God. You know, we've seen, we've seen that very clearly. We tackled the question of why Jesus never went about calling himself, or rather saying, "I'm God, I'm God." And my brother Fred gave, you know, a very helpful sort of contribution last week when he said, "He was humble, you know, he was not like many of us, maybe if it was me, and somebody, you know, people were ignoring who I was, maybe I might let it slip at some point, who I was, but not him, he was, you know, even when he stood before Pilate. Pilate said, "Look, don't you know that I have the power to set you free? I'm asking you a question, wouldn't you answer me?" And even then, Jesus would not answer, you know? He could have provided lots of answers that would have swept Pilate off his feet. But if he had done so, then you and I would not be sitting here today talking about him. It was through his death and resurrection that we have salvation. Therefore, we can sit here and discuss his works. So Jesus had a completely different approach to life, and we thank God for that. He set an example for us, which we are trying our best to follow. We then moved on to see that Jesus actually spoke through his, his deeds, through the miracles that he performed. That when he turned water into wine, that it was a specific deed done to show his prowess, his control over nature, over creation. You know, we all know about the cussing of the thick tree. That was so, even though we didn't talk about it, that also was a manifestation of that power, that his control. You know, when he healed people, where, you know, a man who has been, who'd been crippled for 30 something years, and he healed him instantly. A man born blind, you know, there are people who believe that this guy maybe didn't even have their eyeballs in there because he took a piece of clay, spat on it, formed it into something, put it on this person's eyes, and he went and washed in the pool of Siloam, and he could see. So Jesus did miracles, not for show, not to, not to show people how powerful he was, but he did miracles to also convey a message about his identity. So that when he had finished, you know, the miracle of raising Lazarus from the dead, it was clear in people's minds, "No, this is it, this is no ordinary man, this is no ordinary man." There's an important lesson also that we didn't focus on when we talked about the miracle, the various miracles, and that is this: miracles don't save people. Miracles don't make believers. It's so important. Much as Jesus performed the miracles, so the miracles would speak about him, rather than him going about saying, "I am this, I am that," the miracles would speak for him. Instead of doing that, Jesus, you know, he, he performed miracles. But you see, those miracles did not change lives. It was the word that changed lives. At some point, Jesus started telling some cities, Corazon, Bet-Sider, he started Capenium. He said, "If the miracles that were done in you had been done in Ty and Sidon," those people would have believed, "or if they had been done in Sodom," is it in the last day, "Sodom and Gomorrah." "Sodom and Gomorrah will rise up and condemn this generation." Because if the miracles that were done in you had been done there, they would have repented. They would have repented. So in Capenium, if you read, if you read the Gospels, you know, the first three Gospels, Matthew, Mark, and Luke, what will you discover? You'll discover that Jesus was the next door neighbor. So if your child was sick, you didn't bother with the doctors, you just went to him. So one day, Jesus gone out to pray, he woke up nearly hours of the morning, went to pray, and when he returned, Peter, Peter and the other apostles went and met him and said, "Master, they are waiting for you, everybody's waiting for you." They were waiting for him early in the morning, early in the morning. These guys consumed the miracles, they made the most of the miracles, but they didn't believe. When he fed the 5,000, more people gathered, they came looking for him. They wanted more bread. But you know, when Jesus started to expose their motives, and started to show them, "The look here, you guys, you're just out here to just fill your belly, you don't really, really, you're not looking for experience with God." When he exposed them, guess what? They left. All of them left, only the 12 remained. So much as Jesus let his miracles speak for him, that's not to say that miracles actually will convert people. The miracles were testimony, so that one day these people were standing before the Lord, and they can't say that I didn't know that he was a sign of God. The miracles speak. But it's important also for us to know that miracles don't convert. It is so sad that we have entire ministries, churches built on signs and wonders. Years ago, I used to think that was a good thing. I used to think that was a good thing. I used to think that the churches that didn't have signs and wonders, that they were dead churches, and that it was the ones that were based on signs, I mean, that were at least flowing in signs and wonders, these were the, the churches where the Holy Spirit was presenting. Now, don't get me wrong, the Holy Spirit performs miracles, but church is not about signs and wonders. Church is about maturing believers. Church is about equipping the saints for the work of the ministry. And what is the work of the ministry? Expanding the kingdom of God. Expanding the kingdom of God, the kingdom of God. The kingdom principles that have become established in your heart, you are then supposed to pass them on to other people, so that God's kingdom is spread in this way. That is what the church is about. It's not about signs and wonders. Now, while we are doing the work of the ministry, we may come across somebody who is suffering from one condition or the other, and we may lay hands on them and pray, and they'll be healed. But that's not why we're doing the ministry. That's just, if you like, a fringe benefit of the ministry. The Bible says, "These signs shall follow them that believe." They're supposed to follow us, they're not supposed to be ahead of us, they're supposed to be something that we chase after. They're supposed to follow us. So this is just sort of a side issue, but I thought I should just bring it in. Jesus performed miracles, but that was not his focus. He didn't come to perform miracles. He came to do certain works so that the people may believe. They may believe he was who he was. Because without them believing that he was who he was, they would not be saved. The Bible says, "How can they call upon him without a preacher?" How can they call upon him, you know, they must first of all hear about him before they will believe, and then when they believe, they'll call upon him, and then they'll be saved. If you, if the person carrying your, the solution to your problem walks past you, but you don't know who they are, you're not going to approach them. Likewise, if a person thinks Jesus is just the son of Joseph, just an ordinary man, they are not going to reach out to him as unto the Savior. But if they recognize him as the Savior, then they'll reach out to him. That's why it's necessary, it was necessary back then for people to believe that he was the Savior, and it is the same today. It is necessary for people to know that Jesus is not just an ordinary man. This thing may seem to us like a simple, straightforward matter, but it's a major obstacle for people getting saved. Jehovah Witnesses struggle with that. What do you call it? The Muslims struggle with that. To them, Jesus is just a human being, and, or was a human being. And there's no, you know, they can't identify with this notion that he is God. So getting convinced about this is also equipping ourselves with an evangelistic tool, so that when we come into contact with people. See, back in the day, preaching was all about repent and, and give you, you know, give your life to Christ. But the world that we are living in, the unbelief that has set in, that is no longer enough. There was a time when just preaching repent was enough because the world was already primed, prepared to accept the gospel. But we now live in times where there's so much unbelief. People don't care. You can say, "Oh, the Jesus is coming soon," and then somebody will tell you, "So what?" It's not like it's, they are concerned. I remember times when you would preach the rapture, and just preaching the rapture, people would get saved. Because as soon as they realized the possibility of them being left behind, that was enough to get people kindled. But we're not living in a world where people honestly don't care. They don't care. So there's a need to equip ourselves with a range of tools in order to be effective in ministry, in order to be effective in God's kingdom. We saw that Jesus walked on water. We saw that it was done deliberately. It wasn't something, you know, it wasn't just one of those things that you'd do. If you read the circumstances very well, you'll discover that he didn't have to do that. He just didn't have to do that. I mean, can you imagine putting your disciples in a boat and sending them on their way, then you disappearing, and then suddenly you come walking on water? He did it for his disciples. He needed them to see who he was, to really understand who he was. Because their salvation was also contingent upon believing that Jesus wasn't just a man. We saw how Jesus worked on the Sabbath, broke the Sabbath, and then told the people that he was Lord of the Sabbath. The Sabbath came into existence when God rested on the, on the seventh day. So can you imagine that God rests, God's rest, Jesus comes and says, "He is Lord of the Sabbath." Only God can do that. Jesus provided commentary on God's commandments. This is also something that is easily overlooked, but it's so important. You know, who, in the book of Revelation, we are warned not to add to God's commandment, that the plagues that are in the Bible, or in that book, will be showered upon you if you add to that word. Then Jesus comes along and says, "You have heard it said. Moses said this to you, but I say this. If he wasn't God, he would not be able to do what he, what he did." You know, the Bible says that when he had finished the sermon on the mount, the people were shocked. He just couldn't believe that somebody could talk like that. And they were not shocked in the sense that, "How dare you," they use, "No." They were shocked because they could see his authority. And you know what they said, that he taught not like the Pharisees. He spoke with authority. So today, we're going to round up the subject of Jesus's identity. From next, next, well, next week, just, just to remind you, next week, because I'm traveling, we won't be able to have this session, or maybe because I'm traveling the same day that we have the session, so it won't be possible. But by God's grace, the week after, we'll have a session, and we'll start with a new topic. You know, if you remember, a few weeks ago, I talked about watershed moments in the history of mankind, and said that one of those watershed moments was, it's the rapture, the rapture, the second coming, the rapture. So that's going to be the next topic that we will, we will talk about, we'll look into. And, and, and that, that particular study will also give us an opportunity to really examine the subject of Bible interpretation, how to interpret the Bible correctly. Now, one of the major challenges to understanding Jesus's identity, one of the major challenges, is that there are seeming contradictions in the things that Jesus either said, or things that have been written about him. Okay, so we're going to go through some of those seeming contradictions, so that we can then trash them out, and then we can tie things together. So the first one is in relation to this passage that we find in John, chapter 14. It says, "Let not your heart be troubled. You believe in God, believe also in me." So first of all, if we pause there, it says, "You believe in God, believe also in me." Now, there's a distinction there. God and me. God and me. Now, we have been saying that Jesus is God. How can he then say, "Believe in God, but believe also in me?" "In my Father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am, there you may be also. And where I go, you know, and the way, you know." Thomas said to him, "Lord, we do not know where you are going, and how can we know the way?" Jesus said to him, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me." John 14, 1 to 6. Here, we've got a very clear example, where Jesus says, "I am a means to an end." The Father is the end, I am the means to an end. And there are people who latch on to that passage, the way to the Father, and they say, "That's it, it's clear." Jesus never said that he was anything more than a means to an end. Except that in this very passage that I've just read, it says, "Let not your heart be troubled." He is, he was about to leave the earth, and his disciples were troubled because he was telling them about his departure, and they didn't like it, and were sad. And Jesus said, "Don't be troubled. You believe in God." Now, when he said, "You believe in God," he was appealing to a generic concept that they were already familiar with. Everybody believed in God. So you believe in God, so you believe in God, don't you? You believe in God, okay, believe also in me. He put himself and God in that same sentence. He says, "You believe in God, believe also in me." I wouldn't put myself and God in that same sentence. Because the closest I can come to God is be his servant or his child. And what he, he gives, I receive. I can't put myself in the same bracket, the same sentence with him. But what Jesus says, "You believe in God, believe also in me." And then he goes on to say, "I'm going to my Father's house, I'll come and take you, you'll be there with me." And then it says, "I am the way to the Father." These seeming contradictions just cause confusion. But what I'd like you to see there is that, they're being the Bible, the Bible is not written the way our literature, our traditional literature is written. You see, we come from a Greek thought whereby, because we've all inherited the educational system we have, you know, we inherited it from the West, and the Western educational system is, you know, predicated upon a Greek thought. So the way the Greeks thought, the way the Greeks did things, that's what's been passed on all the way down to us to this very day. And when you, even when you read the New Testament and the Old Testament, you see that the New Testament has certain clarity that you don't find in the Old Testament. The Old Testament, you get a narrative, a narrative. But the New Testament can give you very clear information, precise, forensic, more forensic than you get there. And we don't communicate like this. If we introduce some ambiguity, which you might find in poetry, et cetera, it is still done carefully in such a way, they are the end of the day, you will know exactly what's going on, and you will walk away with any, any doubts in your mind. Well, that's not how communication was done in the people, you know, of the East. Their approach was quite, they were able to handle nuances much better than, than us. We get troubled because we want everything to be black and white. Whereas they could make a statement that sometimes was even to us a question, but to them is actually an answer or a statement. You know, when Jesus said, "What, what does your concern have to do with me?" You know, he had answered his mother, another question, but it seemed to us as just that he posed another question. Jesus said, "Let not your heart be troubled, you believe in God, believe also in me." And then he goes on to say that he is the way to the Father. I'm going to take us to a certain passage, very interesting passage, found in John, chapter 1, which will begin to show us how we need to interpret Scripture, and how we need to be careful with our interpretation, not to find something and just build a doctrine on it, but, but to be more careful. But before we do that, let's read this one. "I am the door. By me, if any menta in, enter in, he shall be saved, and shall go in and out and find pasture. The thief cometh not, but for to steal, and to kill, and to destroy. I am calm that they might have life, and that they might have it more abundantly." John, chapter 10, verse 9 to 10. We all know this passage. Here, Jesus says, "He's the door." In other words, a gateway to something. So here also like a means to an end. Jesus says, "I am the true vine, and my Father is the vine dresser. Every branch in me that does not bear fruit, he takes away. And every branch that bears fruit, he prunes, that it may bear more fruit. You are already clean because of the word which I have spoken to you. Abide in me, and I in you. As the branch cannot bear fruit of itself unless it abides in the vine, neither can you unless you abide in me." John 15, verse 1. Verse 1 to 4. So you can see here, Jesus says, "I am the vine." But the Father is the vine dresser. I am the vine, you are supposed to be in me, the Father is the vine dresser. He makes this distinction, and you think, "Okay, if he's a vine, the Father is a vine dresser." Well, the vine dresser seems to be the superior one, so I won't just relate to the vine dresser. So there are certain statements in the Bible that place Jesus in a position where if someone didn't take the Bible as a whole, they would, could easily conclude that, "Oh, you know what? He is, maybe he's a bit close to God, but he's not quite God." Let's read some more passages. "The bread of life." Then Jesus said to them, "Most assuredly, I say to you, Moses did not give you the bread from heaven, but my Father gives you the true bread from heaven. For the bread of heaven is he who comes down from heaven and gives life to the world." Then they said to him, "Lord, give us this bread always." And Jesus said to them, "I am the bread of life. He who comes to me shall never hunger, and he who believes in me shall never thirst." John 6, 32 to 35. Notice something here. Jesus says, "My Father gives you the true bread." The people say, "Oh, give us this bread," then he says, "I am the bread." So what we get, what have we got here? You have the Father, he's got the bread at his disposal, he hands it to the people. What is the bread? Jesus, he's the means to an end. The Father wants to give you life, Jesus is the bread of life, so the life is in Jesus, and Father hands it to you. So the Father is the giver, you are the recipient, Jesus is the life. Very simple, and this is the model of, or the, you know, the model of the Trinity that people are comfortable with, in the sense that Jesus is the conduit, he's the means to an end, and that the Father, it's a relationship between me and the Father, Jesus being the mediator. That is true, that is clear, it's all in, you know, very clear in the Bible. But it's not the only thing there. Because it said, even in this very passage, Jesus said to them, "I am the bread of life. He who comes to me." You see now, on the one hand, his bread being handed to the, handed down by the Father unto us. So really, it's the Father we are having, dealing with, Jesus being simply the bread. But he says, "He who comes to me shall never hunger, and he who believes in me shall never thirst." That is the difference, that is the, that is the mystery that we are dealing with. He is a means to an end, but he's also more than that. One moment, he's talking like the Father is the one that is giving you everything, the next moment, he's saying, "Actually, it's me you have to come to." And this is what causes confusion. Jesus, this, the next example is to do with, Jesus has been the resurrection and the life. Jesus said to her, and that's, you know, referring to Martha, "I am the resurrection and the life. Whoever believes in me will live, even if he dies, and whoever lives and believes in me will never perish." John 11, 25 to 26. This is around Lazarus's death. So here, Jesus says, "I am the resurrection, and I am the life." Instead of saying that he is the giver of life, he says, "He is the life itself." "My sheep hear my voice, and I know them, and they follow me, and I give them eternal life, and they shall never perish; neither shall anyone snatch them out of my hand." Now, do you see a difference? So here, he is the life, here, he's the bread that is given, but over here, he says, "I give them eternal life." Just as the Father gives life to you in the form of the bread, Jesus does the bread. Jesus himself says, "I give you life." He's doing exactly the same thing that the Father does. So those of you that, I think you're all on the WhatsApp group anyway. So you would be aware that I posted three messages about Bible interpretation on the platform. If you haven't listened to them, please go back and listen, because they are supposed to, you know, complement what we are doing here. So sometimes I'm not able to see everything here. So sometimes I'm not able to see everything here, so I just record them and then I post them there, so please make sure you listen. But this principle is very interesting because just recently I decided to sort of systematize what I knew about Bible interpretation, because what I know about Bible interpretation, I didn't read it, you know, I didn't go to any theological seminary, I didn't really, you know, I haven't had formal training. Is just studying the Bible, studying different Bibles, studying materials and listening to the Lord and letting him guide me. And so over the years, I just learned Bible interpretation in a very sort of organic way, you know, without following any method, any formula that somebody has put down. But I, because I'm teaching, I decided, okay, Lord, um, lead me to some sensible material that I can sort of systematize what I know. And it was very interesting that as I was going through the principles, I just thought, okay, so I've been using these principles all these years, but I didn't even know that there was such a thing that actually it's been formalized. So there are, there are a few, about seven to eight principles, depending where you look. Okay, and the first principle is that you take a passage, read the passage, let the passage speak for itself. Don't read into the passage. Don't try to make the passage tells a story. Don't go in with your own biblical, your doctrinal biases. Just let the passage speak. You know, the most extreme example of somebody reading something into a passage is, I've heard such stories where, you know, people who don't believe in healing, for example. So they read about Jesus, Jesus healing the cripple. And then they say, they read a story and they say that we were all like that. We were crippled with sin, then Jesus came and he healed us. Yes, you can apply the scripture that way, that's called application. But you can't interpret what you've read that way. If Jesus healed somebody physically, then he healed somebody physically. You can't take that and make it look as if the physical healing didn't happen. So read the passage, don't try to add anything to it. Don't try to get a lesson out of it. Don't try to apply it to yourself. Don't straight away say, what is God saying to me? No, you are not at that stage yet. I hear people say that every passage in the Bible is about, don't, don't do that, you will miss the message. What is this passage actually saying? What is it saying to me? Now, when you've read it and you've understood what it's saying, then you can go, you know, you've got a general idea of what the passage is saying. You can go to the next level where you now want to look at the particular choice of words. There's a reason why certain words have been used. The word of God is inspired, which means that not just the, the narrative, not just the, the meaning behind it is inspired, but the very choice of words, science is inspired because those particular words would then trigger something. The Holy Spirit will use those very words to speak to you. So there is a need to then go and search for the meaning of the words. Where else in the Bible have those words been used? And, you know, I talked about the Biblestudytools.com, that website, we went there, where you can look for the interlinear Bible and you can click and then it will show you the meaning of the word and where else in the Bible it's been used. So once you've done that and you've checked the different words, you've pondered over it, you meditated, you then ask yourself this question, okay, now, when you say where else those words have been used, go a step further and say, where else can I find the message in this passage? Where else can I find it in the Bible? Sometimes it's easy, sometimes you need the Holy Spirit. So sometimes what I would do is I'll just do a Google search, because Google is a very, very powerful search engine. And you can simply say, Old Testament reference, and then you put the passage that you are trying, you are looking for, you know, in the Old Testament, and you will find a cross-reference that will take you there. Okay, so you want to compare the state, the Bible passage that you just read with other Bible passages. Why? Because the Bible interprets itself. That is the beauty of the Bible. Until I discovered this, my understanding of the Bible was fragmented. I come to a passage, it looks beautiful, I read it, and then I try to apply that passage, not knowing that the meaning has actually been revealed elsewhere. If you come across a passage you don't understand, don't worry. If you're patient enough, you will find another passage somewhere that offers the interpretation. Okay, so finding the parallel passage is very, very important. That parallel passage will help interpret this one. But you can, but you need no stop there. You can go a step further and ask yourself, is there a passage that contradicts this one? This is where the, the treasure actually lies. You see, as long as your Bible study is all about for confirmation, 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 you will not grow deep roots into the Word, into the Lord. Then one day somebody comes to you and then challenges you, they find something in the Bible that contradicts what you believe, and then suddenly you are confused. Let your Bible study lead you to actually find the contradictions, the seeming contradictions yourself. And then go before the Lord and say, Lord, what's going on? Why do these passages contradict themselves? You know, many people say that the Bible is just full of contradictions. They don't understand, the contradictions are deliberate. God put those contradictions there to wake you up. You think you've got a doctrine, do your doctrine, and then suddenly you come across something, boom, it hits you, it's like, how is this thing, how can these two marry up? Yes, now you need the Holy Spirit. Then the Holy Spirit with wisdom guides you and shows you, ah, this is how it is. Okay, so you need to find contradictions. And you need to meditate on those contradictions. Allow God to open your eyes so you can see how it applies. When I started doing this, it blew my mind. You know, we will, at some point, we will be talking about the subject of, um, generational curses and, you know, um, general people casting a spell on you or cursing, all those sort of things, we'll be talking about that. Not, not, you know, soon. And when we come to that, I'll share with you some of the things I discovered using this principle, the principle of looking for something that seems to contradict what you, what you've actually just read. And you discover that the contradictions actually help to interpret the passage better. Because this is what God does. You know, God, the Bible says, God is king. And the word of the king is law. When they pass law in parliament, they will also pass other laws that sometimes place limitations on the previous law. It's like one law holds another law in check. So as to produce a balance, so that people don't abuse the law. Well, God is like that. He will say one thing here and then he'll say another thing here, and then you're like, wait a minute, what's going on? It's only by studying it too carefully that you begin to see, ah, this actually is not a contradiction. It provides commentary, it shows you the limitations of the other one. You will often find that one verse in the Bible has a wide scope, another verse has a narrower scope. Yeah, we'll be looking at some examples shortly. So always find the parallel passage, even find a contradictory passage. And what you will also find is areas of overlap between contradictory passages. So let's look at some examples. Jesus said, I am the way, the truth and the life. We read that already. But then, there's also this passage, "For as the Father has life in himself, so he has granted the Son to have life in himself." He said he's the way, the truth and the life. And the life here is fine, but there's the way, the way being, you know, a means to an end. But then he says, as the Father has life in himself, so has the Son life in himself. What the Father can do, he has made it possible, the Son will also be able to do. Which is it? Is that contradiction? No, the two are supposed to be put together and then you get a more wholesome picture. You get a more wholesome picture. When Jesus met Nathaniel, he talked about how Nathaniel, that he had spotted Nathaniel when Nathaniel was still sitting under the fig tree. Nathaniel was blown away. And then he said, um, master, you know, he was blown away, he said, master, you are the king of Israel, something like that. Then Jesus said, well, you are impressed by this? Wait, soon you will see angels ascending and descending upon the Son of Man. Let me see if I have put that, um, I've put that passage here. Okay, that's here. "Because I said to you, I saw you under the fig tree, you believe, you do you believe? You will see greater things than these. And he said to him, most assuredly I say to you, hereafter you shall see heaven open and the angels of God ascending and descending upon the Son of Man." John chapter one, verses fifty to fifty-one. Now, any Bible student will know that when Jesus said that, he was making reference to Jacob's ladder. Remember when we read about Jacob, Jacob was fleeing from his brother Issa, and on the way, he stopped over at a place called Bethel or Luz, and there he had a dream. And he saw a ladder reaching all the way to heaven from the earth, and angels were going up and down the ladder. See, the Bible offers commentary on itself. Jesus said that statement on purpose. There's so much that he could have chosen to say, instead he just said that. That is a commentary. He said that as a commentary on what Jacob saw. Okay, so he said that, then he left it like that. But let's go back and examine what actually happened then. Genesis chapter twenty-eight, verse twelve. He says, "Then he dreamed," referring to Jacob when he lay down to sleep. "Then he dreamed, and behold, a ladder was set up on the earth, and its top reached to heaven. And there the angels of God were ascending and descending on it." That's Genesis twenty-eight, twelve. But then with this passage from Genesis thirty-one, where Jacob tells his wives about what he had seen. Let's read it. "Then the angel of God spoke to me in a dream, saying, Jacob. And I said, here I am. And he said, lift your eyes now and see. All the rams which leap on the flocks are streaked, speckled and gray spotted. For I have seen all that the laban is doing to you. I am the God of Bethel, where you anointed the pillar and where you made a vow to me. Now arise, get out of this land and return to the land of your family." Genesis thirty-one, eleven to thirteen. So let's try to make sense. This is biblical interpretation. Bible interpretation. You have three passages that are all talking about the same thing, from different perspectives. There is the original experience of Jacob seeing the ladder in the vision. There's Jesus commenting that angels would be what? Ascending and descending upon him, not the ladder. Him. What does that mean? It means that the ladder in the Old Testament was Jesus. You see, the ladder in the Old Testament was Jesus. But that's not all. If God, the Father, is sitting at the top of the ladder, Jesus is the ladder. He is the one that links man to God. He's the mediator between man and God. Therefore, if he is the ladder, it makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? And it should all stop there. But no, it doesn't stop there. The angel of the Lord says, I am the God of Bethel, and you and I say the angel of the Lord is Jesus. So if the angel of the Lord is Jesus, and he says, I am the God of Bethel, that means he was the one that was sitting there. Because the God of Bethel wasn't the ladder. The ladder didn't speak. The God of Bethel was the one that spoke. What's going on? You see now, this is why, because sometimes people say, oh, the Bible is full of contradictions, this is why it can't be true, it's a mistake. No. You are dealing with a mystery. What is a mystery? A mystery for, you know, it's not like the way humans talk about mystery. A mystery is simply something that's hidden until it's revealed. That's mystery in the Bible. God hides it. And he doesn't, and when God hides it, it doesn't mean that he actually covers it up. I'm just using that, you know, that gesture, but he doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that he's covering it up. It simply means that you won't have the ability to discern it, even though it's shown to you. And then the time comes where he lifts the lid, and then suddenly you can see. It was not possible for the people of the Old Testament to look at all of that and say that, that, you know, that there's God, the Father, and God the Son. It wasn't possible. They only saw the one sitting there. They, they didn't do anything about the ladder. Why was the ladder even there? But Jesus says to you, he is the one that the angels will be ascending and descending upon, means that he's a ladder. But then he also say, I'm the God of Bethel. I'm the God of Bethel. Okay. Jesus said, I am the bread of life. I am the bread of life. We've talked about that already. I am the true vine, my Father's the vine dresser. We've talked about that already. But there are also such passages as, "My sheep hear my voice and I give them eternal life." I give them, I'm the giver. Jesus says, I, I am the vine dresser, I'm the vine. My Father is a vine dresser. In other words, my Father is the one going with the, with the shears pruning the branches, which can be likened to discipline. Because when the, when the vine is just growing, it's a wild vine, it doesn't have any pruning, any discipline. But then the vine dresser, the gardener comes and prunes it. Jesus said, "As many as I love, I rebuke and chasten. Therefore be zealous and repent." That's in Revelation three nineteen, I think it's to do with the message to the church in Laodicea. So something that Jesus himself has said, it's his Father that does it. He says, I am telling you. And the book of Revelation is very, very fascinating when you look at Jesus's identity in the book of Revelation. Because the book of Revelation begins with an announcement of God being, you know, um, an announcement about God. Then the next moment, Jesus takes center stage. And then he sends this message to the seven churches, where he says, I will do this, I will do that, I will do that. If you don't repent, I will come, I'll remove your, um, your, the, what do they call it, the candlestick from its place, et cetera, et cetera. The kind of language that you saw in the Old Testament with the angel of the, of the Lord. You know how the angel of the Lord rebuked the whole of, the nation Israel and told them, you did not keep my commandment, therefore I will do this? The same concept you see in the book of Revelation, chapter two, chapter three. Jesus sent messages to the seven churches, rebuking them and warning them. He doesn't say that the father says, no, he says, you must do this because I say so. Let's read some more passages. To him who loved us and washed us from our sins in his own blood and has made us kings and priests to his God and father, to him be glory and dominion forever and ever. Amen. Revelation chapter one, verse five. So this is sort of a words of praise, praising Jesus, who gave himself for our salvation. And then he says, to his God. He's made us kings and priests to his God, priests to his God. Who's God? Jesus is God. But we've just been talking about how Jesus was God, giving instructions, warning, doing all the job of God. Then suddenly he says, to his God, we are being called upon to embrace this mystery. He is both the means to that end, but he's also the end. That's why in, in Isaiah, chapter nine, I think, it talks about unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given. And the government will be upon his shoulder and his name, or he shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. That child will be called Everlasting Father. It's a mystery. He is both the son, but he will also be called Everlasting Father. He refers to the father as his God. The next minute he is God. But it gets even more confusing. Let's read this passage from Hebrews chapter one. But to the son he says, your throne, O God, is forever and ever. A scepter of righteousness is the scepter of your kingdom. You have loved righteousness and hated lawlessness. Therefore, God, your God has anointed you with the oil of gladness, a gladness bit eaten up. So look at what this passage is saying. God the Father said to his son, your throne, O God, is forever. The Father said to his son, O God. So when we talk about the God the Father is Jesus's God, therefore, you know, how can Jesus be God? Well, guess what? The Father also calls his son God. It turns out that the title God is shared by the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. The Old Testament, the word God is Elohim. And Elohim is actually used in other contexts, not just for God. And actually it's a plural. Elohim is plural. It's plural. So the title is God is reserved, the Father is God. The Son is God. The Holy Spirit is God. And the Son can speak as though it's the Father speaking, without saying, oh, my father said. That is the mystery. He can just speak as though it was his father speaking. And then, you know, we haven't been talking about the Holy Spirit much. But there's something very interesting with the Holy Spirit. In the book of Revelation, it states, the revelation of the Lord Jesus. Sorry, can you mute yourself? Okay, the revelation of the Lord Jesus, which God the Father gave him to, and he signaled this through an angel and gave it to John, to be given to the church. There is no mention of the Holy Spirit in it. The revelation of the, you know, of, of, of Jesus, which God the Father gave him. He signaled it through an angel unto the church. Where is the Holy Spirit? We talk about Trinity. Where is the Holy Spirit? Then suddenly, when you're reading the message which was given to the churches from Revelation chapter two and chapter three, what do you come across? He that hath ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. Have you noticed? The Spirit is not mentioned anywhere in that process, in that chain of command. Then suddenly, when the message is being passed on, he says, let him hear what the Spirit says. That's the mystery. So the Holy Spirit is there somewhere. And, you know, I am still studying, I'm still trying to understand the person of the Holy Spirit. But he's like the one who, the invisible hand, who is, doesn't even get mentioned, and yet he's present getting the job done. Says, he who has ear, let him hear what the Spirit says. Even though it was a revelation from the Father, passed on to the Son and passed on to us. So there are two more passages here that talk about Jesus referring to God as my God, my God, my God. But we also know that God the Father refers to Jesus as God. Now, if we are baffled by Jesus being the means to an end, and therefore, if we want to draw the, a, a conclusion that he can't be the end as well, guess what? In the Old Testament, God was the means to an end in the Old Testament. Read something. He says, for my people have committed two evils. And this passage is very dear to me because, as a young believer, I, I strayed a little bit. You know, after overcoming some temptations in Ghana, three months after I got saved, in the middle of I got saved, I faced some temptations and, you know, by God's grace, I took them in my stride, I didn't even flinch. But then I got, I traveled to Eastern Europe to study. And I faced new set of temptations that I didn't even, hadn't budgeted for, if I may put it that way. You know, there are some types of temptation that you kind of know they are coming. But this one I hadn't budgeted for. And I saw myself being drawn gradually, gradually, gradually. The one day, as I was having my quiet time with the Lord, this passage hit me like a break of tones. A ton of breaks, sorry. For my people have committed two evils. They have forsaken me, the fountain of living waters, and healed themselves systems, broken systems that can hold no water. Let me explain. Jeremiah is a powerful book. If you have time, study it. Because the Lord drew me at that time to really, really study the, the, the book of Jeremiah and to, and he kindled the fire in me. He, you know, he brought out repentance because in, when you read Jeremiah, you feel God's emotions. You feel how God is hurt and how God is pouring his heart out. And here he says, they have committed two evils. Two evils. One, they forsaken me and I'm a fountain of living water. But they didn't just forsake me, then they went and they dug up wells. That's what they mean by systems. Wells that don't hold water. So imagine digging up a, 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 a borehole, hundred meters. Maybe hundred meters is too long, but thirty meters, no water. Meanwhile, you go to spring, natural spring that just gushing out of the earth. And you forsaken that. That's what the Lord showed me. And let me, let me, let me show you what sin I had committed so that you might understand, that it's not mystified. Materialism. Materialism. I had suddenly found myself in a new environment, young boy, young man, had a little bit of money. I was giving my stipend for the first time in life. I saw I had more money than I needed. And I got excited. And so people were talking about, oh, I bought myself this new, this, the new, this new gadget where, oh, that we want this, or that we. I was just getting carried away. I was just getting carried away. We're just chasing after things. There's nothing wrong with having things. But there's everything wrong with letting your heart go after things. Because this heart belongs to him. Your first act of worship is to dedicate this to him. Let him be king. Let him dictate how you live your life. That's your number one duty. The whole Christianity is not about going to church. Christianity is not about singing. It's not about making noise. It's not about titling. It's not about this, you know what? It's about dedicating your heart to God. So that he is in charge, so that you can say that he is your number one. That's what Christianity is all about. And so when I departed from that, the Lord showed me, you have forsaken me. You have forsaken me. And so I repented. I remember how, you know, I became, you know, I like to take things of, you know, I'm a bit of an extremist. So once I get excited about something, I take things to the extreme. So I took things to the extreme, but I became really, really zealous for the Lord. But the message out, the, in relation to today's lesson, the point I wanted to make was that God said that he is the fountain of living waters. He's the fountain of living waters. He, instead of saying that he will give you water, he says he's the fountain. He likened himself to the thing that you need. For God alone, my soul waits in silence. From him comes my salvation. So my salvation comes from the Lord. But he's, then he goes on, he says, he alone is my rock and my salvation. Have you noticed? He is the source of my salvation, but he also is my salvation. In other words, the thing I'm after, he is that thing. He's not just a giver of that thing. He is that thing. And that's what Jesus, that's what the New Testament tells us about Jesus. He is the bread of life. He is that thing. At the same time, he is the giver of the thing. He is the giver of life, but he is also the life. That's the mystery. The passage we just read was from Psalm sixty-two, verses, verses one and two. Next passage, the Lord is my strength and my song, and he has become my salvation. This is my God, and I will praise him, my, my fa, my father's God, and I will exalt, exalt him. Exodus fifteen, two. So again here, the Lord has become my salvation. The Old Testament taught that God wasn't just a source of salvation, that he was salvation. He was salvation, and that's what Jesus came to show us. Old Testament. Now see that even I, I even I, am he, and there is no God besides me. I kill and I make alive. I wound and I heal. Nor is there anyone who can deliver from my hand. Deuteronomy thirty-two, twenty-eight. Oh, come, let us worship and bow down. Let us kneel before the Lord, our maker, for he is our God, and we are the people of his pasture and the sheep of his hand. Today, if you will hear his voice, hallowed not your heart, as in the provocation and as in the day of temptation in the wilderness. So we are the sheep of his pasture. He says, he kills and he makes alive. He has the power to wound, he has the power to give life. I'm looking for the Jesus's parallel statement. I don't know what's happened. It's kind of disappeared. Okay. For the Lord said, for thus says the Lord, I indeed, I myself will search for my sheep and seek them out, as a shepherd seeks out his flock, on the day he is among his scattered sheep. So will I seek out my sheep and deliver them from all the places where they were scattered on a cloudy and dark day. And I'll bring them out from the peoples and gather them from the countries, and I will bring them to their own land. I will feed them on the mountains of Israel, in the valleys and in the inhabited places of the country. I will feed them in good pasture, and their fold shall be on the high mountains of Israel. Therefore, so I'll, I'll continue reading from verse thirteen. And I will bring them out of the peoples and gather them from the countries, and will bring them to their own land. I will feed them on the mountains of Israel, in the valleys and in the inhabited places of the country. I will feed them in good pasture, and their fold shall be on the high mountains of Israel. There they shall lie down in God, in a good fold, sorry, and feed in rich pasture on the mountains of Israel. I will feed my flock, and I will make them lie down, says the Lord God. I will seek what was lost and bring back what was driven away. Bind up the broken and strengthen those what was sick. But I will destroy the fat and the strong and feed them in judgment. Ezekiel thirty-four, eleven to six. Here, we're reading about God, who is the good shepherd in the Old Testament. This is in the Old Testament. But you all know what Jesus said about himself in the New Testament. Then Jesus said to them, most assuredly, I say to you, I am the door of the sheep. All whoever came before me are thieves and robbers. But the sheep did not hear them. I am the door. If anyone enters by me, he will be saved and will go in and out and find pasture. I am the good shepherd. The good shepherd gives his life for the sheep, but a, a, a hiling, he who is not the shepherd, one who does not own the sheep, sees the wolf come in and leaves the sheep and flees. And the wolf catches the sheep and scatters them. John ten, verse seven to twelve. So you see how the father is a, a good shepherd, goes after the sheep, and we see the son. He's not saying that his father is a good shepherd. He says, I am the good shepherd. Okay, I want to round up here. So when we are interpreting Bible, the Bible, there is the need to, first of all, read the scripture. Take it for what it is. Try to understand words that have been used. Search for their meanings. Then look for parallel passages. Passages that seem to say exactly the same thing. Compare the two passages, especially if the two are in the same, like New Testament or both are in the Old Testament. But also, you need one from the new, one from the old. Compare. See what's the message there. Can you see some apparent contradictions? Why are those contradictions there? Are there third pass, other passages that will shed light on the contradictions between the two passages that you are looking at? Okay. Go further. Look for contradictions yourself. Look for contradictions yourself. Then pray, seek the face of the Lord. Lord, reveal to me, why does this passage say this? This seems to contradict this. It doesn't make sense. Trust me, the biggest revelations, they come when you come across contradictions. Okay. The Bible is a revealed book. Revealed literature. It is in, it's a genre of its own. Even though the Bible has different types of genre like poetry, prose, et cetera, the Bible as a whole is different. It's inspired. It's a book whose content is coming from another world. And we are trying to renew our minds so that we can understand what's written in this book. And if you come across anything that seems like, hmm, this one contradicts what I know, don't worry about it. You've, maybe you've just landed the goldmine in terms of biblical revelation. Jesus is the son of God. Jesus is God. Jesus is the way, the truth and the life. He's the door to the sheep. He is the ladder linking man with God. He's the mediator between man and God. But when you climb that ladder and get to the top, guess who you are going to find? Jesus. It's a mystery. The Father calls him God, but Jesus calls the Father God. The Holy Spirit is not even mentioned many, many times. So the whole, you know, denomination, not denominations, but the whole cult, the sect. So the whole, you know, denomination, not denominations, but the whole cults, the sects that believe that the Holy Spirit is just a force. It's just a force. But it's not a force, it's a person. Just that his position and his role within the triune being is different from that of the Son. God puts the Son, the Son sits on the throne. Then the Father commands that all should worship the Son, just as they worship the Father. In the book of Revelation, when you read, they say glory to him, to him who sits on the throne and to the Lamb. They give honor to the one sitting on the throne. They give honor to the one sitting, uh, uh, the, the, I mean, the Lamb. Both of them receive honor. Holy Spirit is not mentioned. He's not mentioned. He's there, but he's not mentioned the same way. You don't see people saying that glory to the Spirit in the, in the, in the whole of the, eh, eh, book of Revelation. But he's there. He speaks. So he's a person. He's not a force. He speaks. And we are told not to grieve the Holy Spirit. His job is to make Jesus known, to make people glorify Jesus. His job is to help break down the message that Jesus brought to the earth. He works on behalf of the triune being. But he doesn't sit on the throne the same way. Okay. So this will sort of bring gradually, sort of bring to a close, the subject of the nature of God. We haven't exhausted it at all. But I feel like it was in response to a question, and we need to now move on to the next topic, which we will do when we meet in a couple of weeks' time. As I said, we won't be meeting next week. But as usual, this is where we start to, you know, um, we pause for reflections and for questions, um, contributions. So please feel free to unmute yourself and share with us what you've learned, and if any questions that you have. If you have any questions, please feel free to voice them.
Yeah, thank you so much for today's, today's messages. Very deep, very, very deep. And thank you for going through the trouble of gathering all this information to give to us. This is God bless you for that. And I encourage all of us to also do our, our own research and, you know, read the Bible and get more understanding of the scriptures, because the more you read, the more understanding you get, and more interpretations will come to you yourself. So people, so we avoid people going to look for the information and give to us, and we are like, we wonder how, or is it like, and us, our understanding becomes something else. So we need to go through the scriptures ourselves, like what we have here. We have to revisit them, read, and understand them more as we read. Thank you today. Thank you for this powerful delivery.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless you too. And yes, um, I, I concur, I concur with what you just said. Um, you know, I, I can, there's only so much that I can share. There's only so much that any particular person can share. At the end of the day, your own spiritual growth will be dependent upon your personal Bible study. You know, if you spend time to stu- to study the Bible yourself. Um, this here is not going to be, it's not enough. It's not enough. There is the need to go home and do your own homework. But so this is more like an outline to help you, to guide you to do your own Bible study. Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for that contribution. Who wants to go next? Okay, Ava, I'll come to you. Anything to share, any questions?
Yeah, really, really nice again to everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Well, yeah, like Bishop said, God bless you so much for the time to do this, you know? And sometimes we we don't come and leave, but you patiently wait for us. For your patience. Yes. And, and I agree with Bishop, you know, it's not only to read the Bible, but we have to do a proper study. Because I think that we do religion without studying. You have to do a proper study, like you are in school, eh, you know, going to sit for an exam, so when you are doing research, we don't do that. We only read through and not understand. No cross-reference, it's nothing. So, yes, yeah, I mean, what is to help us to be able to? But then, and there's something that I wanted a little clarity on.
Yep.
Um, you know, the, that, the title, people, the title of Christ. Okay.
Yep.
Um, you know, people have heard people say that Christ is not, um, Christ is the consciousness, like the omniscient intelligence, you know, of God. That is, that is omnipresent in every part of Christ. So it's not like it's limited to Jesus alone. Christ is you, the whole public, that Christ is you is, eh, being self-conscious. So I don't know, you know, we, just says the Christ, Christ Jesus. Eh, what is it? Eh, is this an honorary title? Is this, um, like they say, that it's um, consciousness that knowing so?
Okay, let me comment. First of all, I, you know, that's why I li- I like your, I always like your contributions, especially your questions, because you help us to, you know, to dig deeper. Now, I've never honestly come across this doctrine before, this, you know, Christ in you being the consciousness or something like that. I have never come across it. Um, and I've not come across it in the Bible either. Christ, the, if we go back to the original, the word that's been translated as Christ is Mesia, Me- the Messiah. So that's the Messiah, and the Messiah is a concept, which means the anointed one. You see, sometimes a word is translated, and then people attach their own meanings to it. But if we were all speaking Hebrew, we'd be saying Mesia. And, you know, and, and, and would be say, and when we said that, it would mean the anointed one. Now, the anointed one, that term, wasn't just applied to Jesus alone. Was applied to David, was applied to different, was applied to kings, because kings were anointed. So the, the anoint, it, it, when you read, um, the book of Daniel, you discover that they, they refer to the Messiah, and they say the anointed one. But in the book of Daniel, the, the, this particular anointed one is singled out, because all the kings were also anointed. But this particular anointed one is singled out. And then he's also called Mes- Messiah the prince. So he, you know, he's not just, he's going to be a different kind of ruler. That's basically how Daniel identifies him. And then that concept then is carried on, so that after the Jews return from captivity in Babylonia, it becomes Messiah, Messiah, Messiah. That's all they were looking for. So it becomes Christ, Christ, Christ. They're looking for Christ. A person who would come from the Father, from God, and he would bring salvation, he would bring deliverance, he would bring everything that they were hoping for. Mo- most importantly for them, political deliverance would be given by this Messiah, this Christ. Now, what they did not know was that this Christ was actually God. And that he was, you know, he was the God that they, they worship. He was going to come, and he was going to be the Messiah. So when you and I receive Christ, Christ comes to live inside us. It's God that's come to live inside us. That's all I know about Christ in you. I don't understand the concept of it being a, a kind of consciousness. That's where the title comes from. I, I haven't found that in the Bible. Crazy, you might be, you, maybe you might be familiar with this concept.
Yeah, um, good evening. It's been propagated around, um, even though it's not stated in black and white in the Bible, but it's been interpreted in some sections of the church. Um, as my sister said, but it's good with the explanation you've given. You know, if, whenever we try to read our understanding into the Word, we come out with all these doctrines. And it's not biblical, it's not in the Bible. So I wouldn't go with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's helpful. Ava, what do you think?
Uh, okay. Yeah, no, you know, I just, because, um, these days, yes, it's more of, of, you know, I've been hearing more of that, and I wanted to clarify it in my mind. I, I wanted to be sure of what exactly it is, you know?
Hmm, okay.
So yeah, maybe, like you said, you know, I, I mean, it's not in the Bible. Then, uh, I don't know if it's human understanding of faith, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Possibly, possibly, but, but we, we need to, one of the, the, the biggest deceptions of the devil is that you will be God. You will be as God, you know, he told Eve. Nah, that when you eat this food, you won't die. No, you will be like God, knowing good and evil. You know all things. You'll be like God. And that lie, it comes, it's been coming back. It's been making a comeback in different ways, in different forms. You know, when you, you are a child of God, you are, your identity is either you are a child of God or you're, and you are a servant of God. Those are your, those are your identities in Christ. And now, this consciousness business, what, what is that supposed to do? Is that supposed to make you feel like you, 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 that there's something that you by yourself, you possess, that you are no longer dependent on Jesus? And, and because you've got a certain kind of consciousness, that you're now on a different level. I've, I've heard those sort of things before. And to me, they are just the same lie that was given to Eve in the garden. That is just being disguised and just coming a different way. Anybody that wants to break you away from your dependence on Jesus is a liar. Jesus is the door or the gate to the sheep. You go through him. You acknowledge him. You lift him up. You magnify your dependence on him. That's true Christianity. Anything that seems to make it look like you of your own self, you are somebody, is taking you away from, like God said in Jeremiah, the spring of living water. It's taking you away from that spring, so that you can dig your own wells. I hope this is helpful.
Yes, yes, I, you know, it's a man know thyself, and thyself, I don't know if that is what, because to know yourself, eh, knowing yourself, is, I don't know if that will mean that it's no longer, I don't know, like, so what? I, I feel like, um, that is not, I'm not talking about the consciousness aspect.
Yeah.
But knowing yourself, eh, that one, I don't know if it's just language, because know yourself, then you can know God better, or you can know, you can know Christ, I don't know.
Okay.
So, no bother about that, because I guess, you know, I was, and, and some of these things are not, I don't know. You don't, you're not even finding it in the Bible. Man, know thyself. I don't think it's in the Bible.
I know, I've heard those sort of, um, statements. Um, I have not, I don't know that it's in the Bible. I, I'm not sure that it is. I'm not sure that it is, but I think it's more, even if it is, you know, it's, it's about what the context.
Yeah.
The passage must have a context. What, you know, so, I, I, yeah, that is, that's going to be the key thing. But what I would say is to guard against is, um, guard against anything that takes you away from dependency on Christ. That is the key thing, you know? There, it's like when they train, you know, bank tellers, they don't train them on the different types of counterfeit notes out there. Say, oh, there's this counterfeit that's just appeared in Peru. There's this counterfeit dollar that has just appeared somewhere else, or euro or pounds. No, because the thieves can make millions different counterfeits. No, they teach them how the original one looks like and feels like. So anything that departs, deviates from the original, it's fake, simple as that. And that's how we're supposed to do. We're supposed to hold on to Christ and know him so well, that anything else that comes, you know, this one is not it. That's what Jesus said, my sheep know my voice. That, eh, those who came before me, they were thieves, and the sheep did not believe them. They didn't follow them. We are supposed to know his voice. We are supposed to know what is Christ. And then any other thing will be counterfeit. People will come out with all sorts of strange statements. By the way, when we start talking about the end times, you will discover that there will be strange, strange, strange doctrines. Things are going to come. The Bible says, if it was possible, the very elect would be misled, if it were possible. In other words, they're, it's going to, they are going to come close. They are going to come close. They would disguise things so much that you will struggle to tell, is this true doctrine or is it not? You will be struggling to tell. When the devil tempted Jesus, those three temptations, he quoted scripture. Then he omitted or added one word. For example, he said, throw yourself off from that height, throw yourself down, for it is written that he shall give his angels charge over thee, lest at any time you dash your foot against the, the rocks or whatever it says. But it's not, it's not there at least at any time. Less at any time, as if you can, you are liberty to go and tempt God today. You jump off, uh, Empire State Building tomorrow. You do this, you do that. You are not liberty to do that. One day you do, you will die. Jesus said, you shall not tempt the Lord your God. You know, so he quoted the Bible, rest in artis, a small phrase. And that's what he will do. He will take different things that sound good. There are certain things that right now, when they are, you know, they are said from the pulpit, people don't know. They don't know that it's false. Because there's nothing obvious, obviously false about it. It's not like somebody saying, go and fornicate, or go and steal, or go and lie. Then you say, ah, that's from the devil. No. But they will give you something that is not Christ. You see, when you study the life of Christ, what you discover is that he stepped away from many good things. They were not bad, though. He stepped that, because they were not of his father. So the best way to deceive someone is to say something good. Just say something good. Something that there's no obvious harm attached to it. You will not be able to even discern that there's something wrong with it. A statement that almost sounds biblical. Show me the passage. Show me the context. Show me a parallel passage that says the same thing, or maybe says it differently. Let's look for a contradictory passage. Let's study the passage, then you can say that you've got the mind of God in that passage. But to just throw a passage there like that, and then people are following it. Deception. That's how people are, many will be led astray. Do you know the Bible says that because iniquity will abound? The love of most. King James uses the phrase, the love of many. So it just, it's most, it's referring to majority. The love of most will go cold because iniquity will abound. By iniquity, you think iniquity is just when people are just violent, killing, lying, blatant? Yes, that is, that's iniquity. But that is the easiest kind of iniquity to protect yourself from. Because it's blatantly evil, so you will not go there. I stopped watching Christian TV many years. I stopped watching Christian TV many years ago. I would rather watch BBC. Do you know why? Because when BBC news finishes, I know from that moment nonsense is going to flow. I know when to stop. But when it's called Christian TV, where do you stop? Things get mingled in. And you don't even know, because it's all Christian. I used to watch Christian TV non-stop. Consuming everything that was coming, because it was Christian TV. When I took a break from that and focused on the Word of God. Now, went back, I said, what's this nonsense on this Christian TV? What is this nonsense? But it's not in the Bible, but that's not in the Bible, but that's a lie. And I stopped. It's difficult to discern the lie when it's mingled with the truth. Okay. Let's see if someone else has something else to share. Irene? I'm not getting any responses there. All right.
Yeah, Doc.
Yeah?
Yeah, just before we do, eh, there is something, you know, I want to, maybe, that one, not now, I mean, I'm just when, um, it's appropriate, you know, this, eh, issue of first food. You know, first food. And tithe and all of that. Eh, eh, and on Sunday, I was in this bathroom because we're doing, talking about first food. Because it's, eh, this month is February, and people are taking January's salary. So, so they are taking first foods in February. And the first food was likened to a can feeling. And so, that if you don't pay your first, you and your generation, you know, like what's happened to it? And I was so, I was so confused. And this, eh, because I wanted, because from my understanding, what it means is that if you are giving your first food, then it should be all your January salary, like, because that is the first. So, are you going to take past, are you going to take one cent of the, the salary? I'm so confused.
Anyway.
I know that in the Old Testament, it was like rox and all those things. So, in this content, because I remember last year or last two years, one pastor came from Danai, okay, he was, and he said that it can't be fifty euros, it should be all your salary, it's your first. And I was like, how will someone pay his rent and those, when he gives all his salary? I mean, I don't get it. So, maybe you have to, because some of these things, it makes, and you know, people, you could see that some people were, you know, like afraid, or, you know, it's still, they're, people's face is deep. So, if I don't pay first food, then.
You know what? Um, I, I put, I put some audio messages on the WhatsApp group. The, the, the last one actually talks about tithes. Now, it doesn't mention first food specifically, but the principle is exactly the same, so please make sure you listen if you haven't already. But the, the first food one, it's, it's, it's very, very easy. First and foremost, the first fruit, as you mentioned, it was in relation to crops, because they were an agrarian society. So, it was about the crops, the first crop that you reap. Now, I don't know where people got the idea of January from, you know, the, the, the first month, therefore, eh, eh, the salary from the first month is your first food. That's, that's, first of all, I don't see the equivalence, that's the first thing. Secondly, if they are going to do that with first fruit and tithe, they need to go the full month and ask people for blood sacrifices. They need to create an altar, they need to start offering sacrifices, they need to celebrate the full moon, they need to do that with the Sabbaths. They need to make sure they do Feast of Tabernacle, because the Bible says, if you break the law in one bit, one part, you've broken the whole law. You cannot just cherry pick some part of the Bible and say, this one, if you break it, then you've broken God's commandment like the way a can did. But then you are ignoring the others. They are from the same Bible. So, people have to be consistent. If they want to go back and become Old Testament temple worshippers, let them do it. Yeah, that's their right, but let them not call it Christianity. When in, in, um, Acts chapter fifteen, some people had gone about preaching circumcision. And were saying that unless you, you get circumcised and you keep the whole law, including first fruit, you are not a Christian. People went out teaching this, and you know what they did? Those people, they went from Jerusalem, and because they went from Jerusalem, people said, oh, they are coming from the headquarters. You've got to think, it's like we have headquarters today for the Catholic churches, Rome, for other churches in other places. They also had a headquarters that was Jerusalem. And so, this, ah, this ones, they came from Jerusalem also, we have to obey. Do you know that the church met, they had a council, Acts chapter fifteen, go and read it. And after they listened to the testimonies from Paul, from Barnabas, from Peter, they concluded, wait a minute. We don't have any right to impose upon people commandments that our forefathers even could not bear. They said our forefathers could not bear with this commandment, so we can't impose them on Gentiles who are not even given the commandments in the first place. Let them only do these three necessary things. That and abstain from strangled, things or sacrifice to idols, eh, we meet strangled, and then, eh, fornication, idolatry, fornication, they just, just them, let them basically do these necessary things, just three things. No first fruit, no tithes, no sacrifices, nothing. Only these three necessary things. And you and I are Gentiles. So, that ruling from Acts chapter fifteen applies to us. Ask yourself, why has first fruit make a comeback? The elders, they struck the question of se- circumcision, and I will assure you that if tithes was being preached the same way as the past people are preaching tithes today, if tithe was preached that way in the book of, in, in the, in, in the days of the Acts of the Apostles, they would have addressed it as well. They said only these three necessary things. In other words, the church in Corinth was not obliged to pay tithe. The church in Galatians were not obliged to pay, to, to bring first fruit. Because that was never given to the Gentiles, it was given to the Jews. Even Jews were set free from it through Christ. But the Gentiles were never given this law. Why have they chosen just the first fruit and the tithe? I'll tell you why, blatantly, covetousness. The Bible says, a time will come when they will make merchandise of you, they will take your money, that's what it means. Go and read, First Peter. They will make merchandise of you. So, that's happening. And people in, are inventing doctrines, they go and airlift something, and they start preaching. I'll say, where is the parallel passage in the New Testament that they are basing this doctrine on? You can't just go and airlift something from the New, eh, Old Testament and teach it to believers. Show me the New Testament equivalent. Show me where Paul spent time telling people, bring your first salary or bring all your crops. The church did not do that. In the New Testament church, people went and sold everything they had, laid all the money at the apostles' feet, so it could be distributed, redistributed for everybody. Not used to buy a jet plane for the pastor. It's covetousness, covetousness. It has nothing to do with the Bible, straight from the pit of hell. Straight from the pit of hell. The doctrine of first fruit, as is being taught to believers today, is from the devil, it's not from God. Why did Jesus suffer so much, so as to put you back on the bondage? God forbid. It's a lie from the pit of hell, don't accept it. Isn't this people, they are without feeling. Imagine telling somebody who struggled, worked hard. Eh, people are farmers, eh, picking tomatoes, doing this, do hard labor to earn some money, to look after their children, to, to pay, you know, eh, their, their bills, if they bring it to the church. And what will you do with it when we bring it to the church? What will you do with it when you bring it to the church? Because in the Old Testament, God said, bring the tithes that there may be meat in my house. Meat for whom? For the poor, the widow, the fatherless. For us, we use ours to buy jet planes for pastors. The church was raising funds to buy BMW for the pastor's daughter who had turned eighteen. Abomination. Abomination. That has nothing to do with the Word of God, that has nothing to do with God. Straight from the pit of hell. So, please, when you get a chance, listen to that, because it offers some foundation principles. But because you've raised this question, we will tackle this subject, you know, thoroughly. Because it is the bane of Christianity of our age. They have turned John three sixteen into Malachi three ten. When I was, eh, even when, before I became a Christian, the passage that you quoted was John three sixteen. Today is Malachi three ten. Nobody cares about John three sixteen. It's all about money. They don't know that money is a god. They don't know that it's mammon. Jesus said, you can't serve God and mammon. Money is a god. It demands worship. You don't know that if I give you ten million to, I don't have ten million to give you, but if I had ten million, I gave it to you today, your life would change. Not for the better. You will get new ideas that you never had before, foolish ideas. Money speaks. Money, it, it, it dictates. It will enslave you, it will destroy you. It is good to work and earn your own money and be in control over it. But worth gotten suddenly, it would, it would destroy those who own it. Have you not seen story after story of people who won the lottery and, and destroyed their lives? That's money. That's money. The love of money has destroyed many, 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 many people's souls. Money itself is no, but let me, let me put in a bit of a caveat there. Money itself is just, it's just a thing, it's just something we use. There's not, there's nothing wrong with it, legal tender, there's nothing. But the love of money, the love of money, that's when it turns it into a god. And then it can dictate your life. It can dictate a sermon, it can dictate what is preached. I could go on and on, but I think I'll stop here. Okay. Good. So, I think we'll wrap up, um, unless anybody wants to say something just before we finish. Okay, all right. So, thank you very much for joining. As I said before, we're not meeting next week, but we'll meet the week after. God bless you all and see you soon.